One. Welcome to the January 27th, 2022 Planning Commission Infrastructure and Mobility Committee meeting. This committee provides an opportunity to have an in-depth conversation with items contained on the agenda. Items can be referred to the committee to explore issues and identify impacts of a rezoning request. The committee discussion is less formal compared to the Planning Commission meeting, and there are generally no time limits for speakers. If participants have issues with the technology, please send a message to the moderator. I would ask the commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments. Finally, please be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. We have two discussion items on the agenda today. The first is rezoning Z-57-21, 1254 New Bern Avenue and 19 and 23 Bart Street. This is a request to rezone approximately a half acre from residential mixed-use three stories and residential 10 to residential mixed-use four stories urban limited conditional use. Conditions limit total dwelling units to 40 and limit total commercial space to 3,000 square feet. We've also seen a draft condition related to parking that staff will tell us more about. This is the first time the case is being discussed, so I'll ask for a staff presentation.
Chair Bennett, I'm just bringing up the presentation now. So this is Z-57-21. So this is the southwest corner of New Bern Avenue and Pool Road, and it's composed of three parcels, two of which are addressed on Bart Street, which also have frontage on Battery Drive, and a third parcel which has frontage on Pool Road and Battery Drive. The total size of the site is about half of an acre. And in this area, the existing zoning is largely mixed-use along New Bern Avenue with residential districts as you move away from New Bern Avenue. And the Battery Heights neighborhood is a combination of residential 10 and residential 4. There is a National Register Historic District that forms a portion of the Battery Heights neighborhood that is southeast of this site. So here you can see the aerial image of this area, New Bern Avenue being the major quarter here. But again, largely residential as you move away from New Bern, commercial and mixed-use closer to New Bern. Here's a little closer image. My understanding is that all three houses on the site are unoccupied at this time. There is a significant amount of grade on this site, so that the portion of the site that has frontage on Bart Street is about 10 feet higher than the portion that has frontage on Battery Drive. And there's a very steep slope basically right along Battery Drive, and it's fairly flat closer to Bart Street. Here you can see that slope from the New Bern Avenue side, and then again from the Battery Drive side. And then this is from the Bart Street side. And so, you know, the frontage itself is close to grade at Battery, but does drop off from there into the site. So there are three conditions currently offered, excuse me, two conditions currently offered in the signed conditions where there has been submitted a draft new set of conditions that would modify that. So the draft conditions that have been submitted would require one parking space per dwelling unit. And basically applies that same requirement, but in the reverse, limits the number of dwelling units such that there could only be one dwelling unit per parking space. And the specifics of that condition is that those parking spaces could be provided by remote parking or off-site parking according to the city's zoning requirements for off-site parking, which for this district would require that parking to be within a distance of 660 feet from the site, and that that requirement would expire after a period of five years. And then the other change in the submitted draft conditions is a maximum square footage of commercial space of 4,000 square feet, opposed to the current maximum of 3,000. So here you can see the total development. This development intensity breakdown is based on the signed zoning conditions that our, that staff has, which did set a cap of 40 units. Without that hard cap on units, that, you know, the amount of parking would dictate the number of total number of units allowed in the proposed zoning, but generally an increase in the amount of residential development and also an increase in the amount of commercial development. And that is coming from the fact that in both the existing zoning and the proposed zoning, there is a residential mixed-use district present on the site. But in practical terms, and that residential mixed-use district has a maximum 4,000 square feet of commercial space that can be provided or is allowed. The practical impact, though, is that the, in the existing zoning, only a single parcel has the residential mixed-use zoning, and so you could not actually reach 4,000 square feet of commercial space on that single parcel that has the residential mixed-use. So this area, of course, is very walkable, has very good transit service, fairly easy to bike to employment centers, and there are many jobs in the area. It's fairly close to downtown as well. There's the Wake Med Hospital, which also is the location of the Wake Technical Community College facility. These are the several transit services in the area. This is not including the proposed Bus Rapid Transit that will serve New Bern Avenue. So in addition to that, planned service, which is supposed to be operating by 2024, there are existing four services, excuse me, three services within easy walk distance and a fourth within a little bit farther walk distance. So this proposal would increase the number of potential housing units on the site, and those units could be in all of the different residential building types and could be in smaller, on smaller lots in the city by average and are near transit. This neighborhood, the census tract containing this neighborhood, does show a higher proportion of residents who are people of color compared to Raleigh in general, as well as a higher proportion of residents who are, who earn low incomes. In terms of land use history, the Battery Heights neighborhood, what portions of the Battery Heights neighborhood were offered as rental housing for Black residents in the early, middle part of the 20th century, and then those portions were then offered for sale to Black residents during the 1950s. My understanding and speaking with members of the community is that the area directly around this site did have lots for sale to Black residents earlier than the 1950s. And so there, you know, are owners who have been in the neighborhood reportedly back to the 1940s, is my understanding. There were restricted covenants on some of the lots in Battery Heights that set a minimum home size. And then also to the northeast is the Longview Gardens neighborhood, about one-half mile away on the north side of New Bern Avenue. When it was platted in the 1930s, included restricted covenants that prohibited non-white people from renting or owning property in that neighborhood. So the future land use map calls for two different designations on this site, neighborhood mixed-use along New Bern Avenue, and then deeper into Battery Heights, the moderate-scale residential designation. And so both of those would support height of up to four stories and all the different residential building types. There are recommendations in the moderate-scale residential designation that the new development be compatible in scale with the existing development. So I have noted in the staff report that a four-story building even split across the grade of this site with, you know, four stories from Battery and three stories from Bart Street is somewhat out of scale with the existing development on Bart Street. But overall, in some total, the designations on this site do support the scale of development that will be enabled by the rezoning request. The urban form map has this as a transit station area indicating the Bus Rapid Transit Station that is planned for Tarver Road, Tarver Street, excuse me. And so it does encourage additional density to provide ridership for the Bus Rapid Transit. And so this proposal would be in line with that recommendation. It also includes the urban limited frontage, which is also in support of walkable areas near transit service. So overall, the request is evaluated as consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use map, and the urban form map, again, coming from policies related to additional housing, density, street activation, pedestrian, comfort and convenience, access to transit, and a mix of uses. And then there are some inconsistent policies that have to do with the potential scale and mass of this building, if it is a single building, in comparison to the existing buildings in the neighborhood. And the outstanding issue in this situation is that the proposed draft zoning conditions have not been signed, and so those are not eligible for action by the planning commission until they are signed. And that's all I have. Do you have any taking questions?
Great, thank you, John. Next, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon. Isabel Maddox here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. I'm here representing Moss Design and Construction, James Moss, principal, is on the line, as is Fred Belladen of Clearscapes. He's our architect. So if you go to our first slide, next slide, you see sort of the layout of these parcels. And we think, you know, it's critical that this area start being developed to support, to take advantage of the BRT transit corridor improvements that are coming soon. Next slide, please. You can see on the aerial, this property is sort of the convergence of New Bern, Battery, Bart Street to the rear, and Pool Road. Next slide, please. So we're proposing that the northernmost lot, well, this is future land use, and John discussed that pretty well. So I'll just go on to the next slide. Yeah, so we're proposing that the northernmost lot, the currently RX-zoned lot, go to RX4ULCU, and that the two now R10 lots go to RX4ULCU. So the difference is that, you know, one has a R10 to start with. And I think, but I think you'll see when the plans, we show the sort of the concept of the building, that we are being very sensitive to the single-family residential properties that are abut this property on Bart Street. So I want to go on that note, I want to go call on Fred Belladen, who's going to talk about our site plan. Next slide, I think is our site layout. Well, there's the BRT. That's, I mean, I think we all know this, that we have this major corridor coming in, running from like the Belt Line to downtown Raleigh. We're sort of right in the middle of that. We're very walkable to the Tarver Road Station. And again, we just think this is an opportunity to really tap into that corridor, to densify this neighborhood on New Bern Avenue, because we need to put the people there that are going to ride the transit, et cetera. And I think as we, as we see trends change, we're going to have more people probably working from home, but also people when they, when they have to go places, they're going to take alternative means of transportation. They're going to, they're going to be on the bus, they're going to be riding bikes, walking, scooters, et cetera. They're just going to, you know, not going to be, it's not going to be every person has a car. But I'll talk more about the parking later, but I want Fred to talk about the site layout, which I think is the next slide. Yeah.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Fred Belladen. I'm a principal with Clearscapes Architects. We do a lot of work in and around downtown Raleigh, and we're thrilled to have the time with you today to walk through this proposal. So a couple of things to point out upfront. John had mentioned a 10-foot grade change on the site. There's actually a 24-foot grade change from the northeast corner of the assemblage, basically the intersection of Pool Road and Battery, to the southwest corner of the site up at Bart Street. You can see the topos, it's probably hard to read on this scale, but you can see that it's about 312 feet down at the corner of the intersection and 336 feet up at the very back. To work with this existing site, what was interesting to us is as the BRT corridor develops, we know that we're going to have some mid-rise buildings arising on New Bern Avenue. And with the roughly two-story grade change up to Battery Heights on Bart Street, we wanted to take advantage of this corner site to start to transition down. So what you're looking at here is essentially a four-story building, although it would only be four stories on Battery and Pool Road, and it would transition down to roughly two stories by the time you get up to Bart Street and Battery Heights.
Now, I think, I think on the next slide is a good graphic.
Yep. If you want to start with the section, we can start there and explain it. So here, you're looking at a photograph from the intersection of Battery and Pool. And here you can see roughly the 10 feet that John was referencing. The site continues to slope up beyond this photo as you look in the back. If you look at the section on the top of this page, you'll see that we have an elevation of 0.0 down at the intersection of Battery Drive. That's that 312 feet that I referenced. And then you'll see the two single-story houses on the far left. Those are 19, sorry, 13 and 15 Bart Street. And what we're proposing is essentially an internal deck, which is set just above the level of the sidewalk, and then three floors of residential above. And then you'll also notice there is a courtyard space between the back of the proposed building and the neighboring properties. So if you eyeball it, you'll notice that the third floor elevation is a few feet above the elevation of the neighboring houses. So effectively, we've got the equivalent of a two-story massing facing the historic neighborhood of Battery Heights. So with that, if you want to jump back to the plans, I'll walk you through that quickly. The goal with this project is to start to create more of a market rate approach to accessible housing. So what we're proposing here is a maximum of 40 units. The purplish units that you see, there are a total of 12, are more conventional, larger-scale apartments or condos, and each of those would have access to their own parking space on site. The smaller blue units that you see are all proposed to be micro units. And the idea of these is that we have a lot of singles and couples in Raleigh who are interested in being in or close to downtown, and by reducing the square footage of the units down, we can create a more accessible price point for a broader swath of our population. Those would potentially be up to about 28 units. One quick note is we are not showing any commercial use in this scheme, so if there was some commercial added on the corner of New Bern and Battery, it would reduce the unit count beyond what is shown here. And then lastly, the one other point that I wanted to make is if you look at the L-shaped building with the green courtyard, we're roughly 30 feet off the property line at this point. So to John's comment about the height, this project assumes that we would be under the 50-foot height threshold, which would allow a type A buffer but eliminate the type B requirement. So if this project were to go taller and actually utilize all of that 68-foot height, we would actually have to cut the building or set the building further back than what we're showing in this particular case, because we would have a 50-foot buffer requirement at that point. So that's a quick overview. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Isabel to walk through the updated conditions for explanation, and then we can dive into questions.
If there are no questions for Fred, I will go just wrap up a little bit here. So we have met with the neighbors on three different occasions. Our last meeting was at Sam Jones BBQ. We had a nice dinner. And their biggest concern is parking. I mean, that's the main thing we've heard. They're concerned that we have a bunch of residents and they have cars and they park on the neighborhood streets in Battery Heights. And it's understandable. I mean, you know, I don't know how long it'll take to get this project built, but probably, I'd say at least, you know, a little bit, a year, a year or two. And that's not going to be instantly, everybody's not going to be riding the bus on day one. So, but we do think that behavior will change, just like we've seen a lot of behaviors change during COVID. I think behaviors have started moving that direction, they'll continue to move in that direction. So for that reason, we propose a condition, and if you go to the next slide, please, a couple, couple down. Go all the way to conditions, I think. Yeah. We propose a condition that we would have a temporary parking requirement. So that would be for five years, we would provide either an onsite space or a remote space. And a remote space right now would comply with the city's remote requirements, which is that they'd be within 660 feet walking distance of this building. And then after the five-year period, we just revert back to whatever the UDO requires. So that's really much, much more preferable parking solution today than the code requires today. I mean, you know, there's, the text change is coursing through the system right now to eliminate all parking requirements. But even if that is not passed right now, you, you don't have to provide a space for your first 16 units. So if you did say 40 units there, you could do 40 units with 24 spaces. Here, if you did 40 units, you'd have to provide 40 spaces. But it is temporary, because we do acknowledge and we do hope to drive the behavior of people living on this corridor to move to alternative means of transportation. Then we also have a condition capping our in-commercial space that we do at 4,000 feet. That would be up towards New Bern, and it's not clear whether, whether that would happen or not. We hope to have a possibility of that in the future. So I think, overall, we're consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. The main issue that staff reported was the incompatibility of this, and that was primarily height, height and building mass. And I think Fred's discussed with you how because we're building into the grade, that height won't feel like a four-story building towering over a one-story, it'll feel more like a two-story, which of course is permitted even in the R4 zoning. They're allowed to go to 40 feet in two stories. And there are some new houses in the Bart Street neighborhood that have, I don't know if they're 40 feet, but they certainly are at least two stories, and they're probably, you know, in the mid, mid 30s for sure in height. So I feel like, the one, I did want to clarify, in these conditions, Fred mentioned a cap of 40 units. We did have a cap in our prior case. We don't have an absolute cap in units, and the reason for that is, is this. There'll be some combination, we think, of micro and more market-type size units. You know, there might be some 800-foot units, there might be some 400-foot units. Obviously, you can do twice as many 400-foot units in the same building size. So we want to be able to be flexible with that mix of units, depending on what the market is telling us. But I don't think the, the structure of the building is not going to be any different regardless of whether we do, you know, a higher amount of smaller units or a lower amount. So, but there's not an absolute cap of the number of units. But I think, I think, you know, we all probably need to be looking at, all cases where there are unit caps, to look at what does that, what does that translate to in terms of size of building? And there are other things too, like parking. But here, we're agreeing to one space per unit, so whether it's a big unit or a small unit, they'll still get a parking space. So anyway, I think that we, we think this, you know, has a lot of strong points, is compatibility with the city plans, proposing more density, more efficient development on a transit corridor. I think, oh, and we, we like the idea of sort of pushing the needle on this BRT development here. So I think that's what we're trying to do. Our, my client, James Moss, who's the builder, who's very knowledgeable and very enthusiastic about this project, is on the line, I think, and will certainly be available for any questions.
And Isabel, I glossed over a couple of slides in the interest of time, but if we could go back two slides, I'll touch on these very briefly for the committee, in case there are questions. One, we had some questions from the community on what a micro unit is and whether people would actually live in them. So we have not done any micro units in Raleigh, but we have done them in other communities. This is one example of a project that is getting ready to start construction in New Orleans. And the basic concept of a micro unit is that you're providing all of the necessary living space and a reduced footprint. So it's very livable, they're light and airy, but what you're doing is bringing down the price point for either rent or for sale, because you're able to fit more units within less square footage. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that. And then the next slide, please. One other comment that has come up from the neighborhood was the question of connectivity between Battery Heights up on Bart Street and the New Bern Battery Corridor, given that significant grade change. So there is an option here that we wanted to bring up if the committee's interested, specifically because we have a transition buffer requirement between this development and the adjacent single-family house. There's an option to do something creative there. For instance, when we did transfer company, because the neighboring houses behind that development were relatively close to the property lines, we ended up flipping, we got a variance to flip the wall location. So we actually moved the wall location onto our property and effectively gave them some additional green space for their yards. So in this particular case, one option would be to work with the city and with the community on something similar, where we take our buffer zone, move the wall well in from our property, and dedicate that 10 or 12-foot space as a public stair that can then be used by the neighborhood residents to connect down to New Bern Avenue, to the BRT line, into the commercial spaces down in that area. These are just a couple of examples from other communities to help provide a picture, a mental picture for all of you. So with that, happy to turn it over for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will hear from members of the public who have signed up to speak. Moderator, how many people are signed up to speak on this case?
So I have three on my list, but I also see that there is quite a few attendees who aren't on that list. So we'll start with those who signed up, and then I can go through and unmute other folks.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I'll just, well, can I just remind everybody to please provide your name and address for the record? And since we could possibly have multiple people speaking, can you just please keep repetitive comments to a minimum so we can try to get through this today? Thank you.
I'll start with Carmen Coffin.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Carmen Coffin. I live at 1321 Battery Drive. I am a Raleigh native. And so you can go to the next slide, please. So these are the things that I'm going to talk about quickly. Impact on the neighborhood, the history of Black and South Raleigh, the impact on our community, and how we really need to think communally to survive together. Next slide, please. So I want to talk a bit about water runoff, because that's an issue for our entire neighborhood. And so as development occurs, we have increased stormwater in downstream communities affected because going from a smaller footprint to a larger footprint increases the amount of water that comes through on impervious services. And we've not really heard anything from the developer, even though we have talked about stormwater runoff, about how they intend to handle that. But they have talked about the extreme grading changes. The picture to the right is the, is some water running, it's a picture of water in between their land and the house next to it. So those two structures that you see, that's a gully that's, this is from, this picture's from last fall. So the, the gully does widen with water, with rainfall. Next slide, please. This is a picture, this is a iMap, this top topographical map, showing where the property is for the rezoning and the low point for the water runoff. So it's very hard to see the blue line, that's a little creek. So when you consider that water is coming from Bart Street down to Battery, down to the, it's kind of a, a deep low point there. It also comes from New Bern and Pool down to that area. So there's quite a bit of water runoff already, and the, the little creek that is back there, this is part of the Walnut Creek watershed, can swell. There have been reports of water damage throughout the neighborhood, not all coming from that particular high point, but other high points. And this little stream feeds into the Walnut Creek watershed and, and causes other flooding in areas that are further away. Next slide, please. Historically speaking, I really want to talk about southeast Raleigh, because I don't think, think about that when we look at environmental issues in terms of a particular parcel. So when the city boundaries were established, the records showed that the city was crisscrossed So when the city boundaries were established, the records show that the city was crisscrossed by creeks and watersheds. In fact, I've just found that the land that Joel Lane sold that made up the city of Raleigh, each of the four corners all had creeks crossing at the four corners. And so there, the, the sitting, the sighting of the state Capitol was to be at the high point. So the low points are, have the ridges and the dank bottoms that are part of Raleigh's terrain. And so Antebellum or white residents didn't want to live in those areas. So they were left vacant for industrial, or for, they were left vacant or for industrial development. And the freedmen ended up living in those areas when they settled in Raleigh because those were the areas that were created by the white people for development. Those lots were either divided up into smaller areas that rental homes were built on or some of those lots were, were divided up for sale. But if you'll notice in that map down there, that is the southeast part of Raleigh, all of that hatched area. Next slide, please. So I have a couple of videos here. If you can click on that first one, this is some rain earlier this month. And one of the neighbors walked, so you see the gully. And you look in the very back there, you can see as the video goes through, the drop from the back of the house down to Battery Drive. And then the picture to the right is more of the picture from last fall where, where the water buildup was. The video on the right side shows down Bart Street, how after rains that we had a couple of weeks ago caused flooding in parking lots in the apartments that are down the street. And so the young lady shows, I think we'll see her foot going into the water in just a minute, but her entire foot gets covered by water in this parking lot. There are two apartment buildings on either side of the street with the same kind of issues. So this is downhill on Bart Street. Next slide, please. The first, first slide, the first picture is another video. And it shows how parking is now. So historically, there were no parking. Historically, there were not driveways in, in most of this neighborhood. So you see what has happened since the, the buildup of the houses that are on Bart Street now, a number of which Moss Construction did build. And so you see that now people are parking on the street because the lots in this part of Battery Heights were so small that there were not driveways for them. And there had been, there had been no parking signs, but due to accidents and things, some, several of those have disappeared. And so the, the community is trying to find out what happened with the no parking signs that were there. The middle photo is where I believe the aggress from the, or the exit from Battery Drive, from the parking area that was shown would be. And this is in, right in this curve that you see on the right hand picture. So the pictures that we were shown by the city were not as specific in terms of how much this curve is. And while we recognize that the New Bern, the Bus Rapid Transit project will do a little bit to contain that. And so perhaps the stoplight will stop. At this point, there is no stop on New Bern. So when people want to turn onto Pool or onto Battery, there is no stop. And literally from where you see the, you can just barely see the crosswalk to the corner. It's maybe 10 yards. It's not very safe to walk there. And when you, if you have to turn into Battery, you have to turn quickly. And trying to get out of Battery is also an issue. So it's more traffic issues, not just parking. There, and there is a blind curb here at Battery as well. Okay, I think you can go to the next slide. So I wanted you to see where the tight squeeze was. So the top left photo, the curve, you can see right where New, from New Bern directly into Pool and you have to turn directly into Battery. And you see the curb there, that curb is blind. The trees are there, which is part of what makes this such a nice neighborhood is because you already have a good buffer from the noise of New Bern Avenue, which is quite a lot. There are ambulances, police cars headed down to Wake Med all the time. It, it's a busy little corner. You'll see to the right, upper right, you'll see the house again. But you'll notice as you turn, go down Battery, you'll see where that curve stop, starts. So when we were standing outside with someone from the city yesterday, we couldn't even hear the cars as they turned into Battery until they were almost upon us. There are no sidewalks here, so pedestrians are walking in the street. So it, there is some, there are some safety issues as well. Next slide, please. And so communally, the community, the full community is very concerned about not just the size and the, the space. Nobody is against Bus Rapid Transit or density, but this is not the best corner to, as I believe Isabel said, this is not necessarily the best place to push for the density. It, it is not the safest part of, of New Bern Avenue to push for this density. The other thing, we, the, the community continually gets reminded that, from the developer, that they didn't have to have their third meeting. There is, there is some feeling among some of the members of the community that the developer thinks they're coming in to save the area, but they're not saving it from the people who have been here for years. My family has lived in this neighborhood. And this is one of the larger Battery Heights houses or one of the lots because Battery Heights was done in more than one iteration. So there was a section in the 40s, there was a section in the 50s, and then there was another session in the 70s before the Gatlings died out. We love our neighborhood. The black people and the white people who live here already love the neighborhood. This is a drastic change for our neighborhood. And we, we have heard from the developer that they like Roberts Park, they like the area, but they go home to Creedmore Road. They don't know the neighborhood and they don't know the neighbors. The density that would be on, fronting on Battery Drive is not, is not the same as what is already here and would obviously change a fairly quiet neighborhood to a fairly boisterous one. And we are concerned about that. Thank you so much for your time. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Coffin. Next speaker, please.
I'm going to unmute John Sykes and I apologize if I pronounce that incorrectly.
Hey, um, yeah, you actually got that correct, so can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll be short. I actually emailed some comments yesterday, if anyone can confirm that they received those. I see a head nod. Great. So yeah, I won't reiterate what I already said, but just to be short, you know, there's a lot of different concerns depending on, you know, who you ask and which neighbor is closest and what neighbors are dealing with what. But yeah, I just didn't want to categorize everything as a parking or a stormwater issue or anything like that. Because I, I agree that those are all issues, but I just didn't want to overlook the fact that, for me at least, the main issue here is just the fact that this is out of scale with the neighborhood and that you're, as I said in the email, piercing the neighborhood boundary of what's already been outlined as residential versus commercial. And you're now entering the residential R10 area of this neighborhood. And I do not agree with that approach. And I think you're going to have a lot of pushback from neighbors, not just here, but throughout the city. If, you know, this happens here and then happens elsewhere. And the other point I just wanted to make was that, you know, a lot of emphasis is being put on the fact that this is fulfilling demand for housing and meeting needs and such. And, you know, I, I do not disagree with those needs and the desire to meet those needs. However, as I pointed out in the email, there is opportunity that's already zoned for this all up and down the New Bern, New Bern corridor. So I really feel like this is an overreach of development. And I, there was even a property literally three blocks down that I emailed to the applicant and their attorney and such that was for sale about a month ago on roughly the same sized land that was already zoned in X3, that they could have probably easily shifted this design right down the street. And, you know, I didn't get any response. So I, there is opportunity to do the same thing where it fits better. Thank you, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Can we unmute our next speaker?
Yep, I have Nicole Burpo next.
Hi, everyone, thank you. I don't want to belabor too many points that my neighbors have already mentioned. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that I'm on Battery Drive. So I'm very close to Mrs. Coffin across the street at 1334 Battery. I do understand the city's need to develop higher density residential areas. But because of the safety issues, I'm very concerned with this corner. It seems like, you know, the developer could still put in and build more dense dwellings. So instead of having three homes that are there, he could even put in something like six or eight, maybe like row houses or town home style homes, which would already double the density that's already there, but not unduly add to the safety, traffic and parking burden that have been presented on this, on this building. So I, again, I don't want to belabor other points, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Burpo. Do we have any other speakers?
I, I don't have anybody else that I know has signed up to speak. There are some attendees that I'm not sure if they're wishing to speak or not. I can go through and unmute those speakers if that's okay and they can.
Please.
Okay. I'll start with Carol Klein.
No comments or, or questions. All the concerns have been very well stated.
Carla Bow.
Thank you. I didn't sign up because I think that Carmen represented us very well. But I will add that my family's been in this area since 1941. We've been in the same house. And this project is changing the character of our neighborhood. We love our neighborhood. We've taken care, we've paid property tax. We love Raleigh and we want to do what is best for our neighborhood and for the city. So we appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Donald Klein.
Yes, am I, am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My daughter Carol Klein lives right across the street from Ms. Coffin. I'm speaking in her representative, representative, I'm her father. She's working out of town today. I'm a retired civil engineer with a couple of degrees from state in Illinois. I've worked in Raleigh and Durham in civil engineering the last 29 years, working with Kimley Horner Associates, retiring as the Senior Vice President of Engineering. She, she specifically chose this community, loves it, is pleased with everybody there. And so I, I think, although I'm speaking strictly for our family and I'm not representing anyone else, I think that our concerns mirror those that the whole community feels. Now, I understand, of course, that you do not want the whole same thing repeated over and over again. But they are so important, and I will keep this brief, but I do need to mention the words drainage, traffic and parking in particular. But let me address a couple of things that no one else has addressed. As a civil engineer, I've been familiar with projects from the dreaming concept stage all the way through completion. And as, as you really know, and I, and I certainly know, things go haywire as you get further and further in. I understand this is simply a rezoning. We're not talking about the specific site plan. We're certainly not talking about the final plans for construction and ready for, for construction. We're, we're at a very preliminary stage, but please believe me when I feel from personal experience that the decisions made now are going to be very, very important down the line. It'll have a long, long effect. And likewise, things that have not yet been discovered about this property are going to have a lot of effect that are not typically covered in much detail, if at all, during the planning stage. For instance, the, the height, which has been mentioned, is up to 24 feet. I'll grant that it's an average of only 18 feet only. But that's a lot, a lot of excavation that has to be done. A lot of environmental controls, concerns, a lot of concerns about the effect of the heavy equipment on the road, a lot of effect about the erosion and the drainage that Ms. Coffin's talked about. Now, feature, think of this, that hillside, and it's a, that's a sharp, almost a cliff. That's been there for centuries and centuries. Why? Well, we don't know. But one very good reason could very, very well be that there's rock close its surface. And once you started finding that you're going to have rock excavation, woo, the whole project changes very drastically. Let me speak about the traffic just a minute in, in more specific. And if you wish, some numerical terms. I've, I've made a career of working with numbers. I'm going to keep these very, very short and they're small numbers. This is, the traffic in this area is very, very fast. New Bern, of course, cars almost catapult over the intersection at Tarburg Street and then roar down the, the street heading east. They, they have very little sight distance for traffic moving off of Pedigree. And before you know it, they have to zip onto Pool Street. And that's just about a 15 to 20 degree turn, so they don't slow down. And then just as they have turned on, on to Pool Street, oops, there's Battery Drive already. And so they're, they're turning on to Battery Drive at very fast speeds. And even with the proposed slight change to the intersection, that's still going to be a fast entrance to Battery Drive. Here's a number. From the time that a car turns onto Battery Drive off of Pool Road until it gets to the proposed entrance into the underground parking, that's four seconds. Four seconds, that was a period of time that I was silent. But that, that's hardly enough for braking distance to, to suddenly turn and find that there's a slow car turning into the parking. to, to suddenly turn and find that there's a slow car turning into the parking deck. Or that there's a slow car just pulling out of the parking deck. That's four seconds to prevent rear endish. And that can't be changed. The, the building has to be where the building has to be. The roads are all where they're, they are, and they're going to change. They're not going to change. The walkability I must talk about, I've read the application. And although I'm not as schooled in planning as much as I am in other fields of, of, uh, civil engineering, including drainage, uh, and, and some street, uh, design. The walkability aspect of this street, of this location may very well, in, in, uh, planning speak, justify a checkoff. Yep, 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 walkable, yep, short distances, yep, uh, all of these things. But in fact, the walkability has to go across this six-legged intersection almost all the time. The only place you can walk from this proposed project without crossing a street is to go to the ABC store. Well, that might be popular. Other than that, there's a filling station. Oh, no, these, these people aren't going to have cars, we're told. Across the street, there's a car repair place. One, one very good feature that is, that I can certainly, uh, approve of and, and applaud is the Richard Harrison Library. But again, that's way across, uh, depending on how you walk, probably Pool Street and then New Bern Avenue. And, uh, I, I understand, of course, that there will be signalization to help the, the walkers. But that's still a long walk, even though it, it's within, uh, just looking at it on the plan view and putting your scale on it, it might measure as, as being within, uh, quote, walkability range. And I grant it is, but it's, it's not going to be an easy walk. Especially if, if you take the argument that these micro apartments will, uh, will be, uh, attractive to some elderly people who don't need a lot of space. Well, they need a lot of time to walk. Uh, and so, uh, I, I would, uh, question, uh, with, with great respect for you folks who are professional and semi-professional planners, that the checkoff on walkability is, has been, uh, called quite a bit, uh, too, too, uh, optimistic. Let me talk some more about the construction process. The project is going to take up practically the whole lot that they have. There's no laydown space. The whole laydown space, the whole construction process is going to take, 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 uh, place off of Battery Drive. They'll certainly have to close half, half of Battery Drive, uh, for this one or two year period that's been mentioned. Uh, just for equipment and for bringing materials onto the site. Uh, in fact, that, uh, dedication of a lane, uh, will probably almost certainly wrap around onto a little bit of Pool Road, perhaps even steal a little bit of, of New Bern. And that's, that's going to be a tremendous, uh, disadvantage to the people who already travel on Bat, uh, Battery Drive. Uh, and of course, the excavation is going to be going through the same area. Everything goes through this one little tight, uh, uh, gateway that, uh, is going to exist during construction and will still exist afterwards. For instance, another issue, uh, when the chickens come home to roost later on is that is the mundane matter of trash collection. Forty, forty units are going to generate a lot of trash. And there's not going to, the place of, uh, placement of the, uh, dumpsters hasn't been talked about yet. But, uh, they're going to have to be somewhere and they have to be somewhere to allow the rather heavy equipment to come and pick those up, uh, two different pickups each, each week. Uh, that's going to be quite a, quite a, a disadvantage. So, uh, again, uh, these are ma- matters that are typically not talked about at zoning level. But believe me, they do happen later on. And they, they influence the quality of life as well in many of these instances, the safety of, of whatever I was talking about. The matter of storm drainage has certainly been mentioned. Sanitary sewage has not been mentioned. Uh, all of a sudden, uh, we have this heavy influx of, of residents on our, on what is probably a, a max, maxed out sanitary sewer system in this area already. That's going to call for more city expense and inconvenience.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. We appreciate those comments.
May I, may I have two minutes? I have some very important statistics. The density in, in Battery Heights, as Ms. Coffin has mentioned, uh, is, is, uh, is very dense. It's, it's much denser. It's almost twice as dense as Raleigh as a whole. And if you take out the high-rise apartments, it may, may very well be three times the average. There are nine dwelling units per acre existing in, in what I consider Battery Heights right now. Nine per acre. We're talking all of a sudden about eighty dwelling units per acre. Not nine, eighty, nine times the existing, uh, dwelling units per acre. Now, that's a quantification of, of the generalities that are talked about. I, I could go on and on. I, I frankly have, uh, concerns about the success of the project. Other people are more optimistic. And I hope that they're right, but I am a little bit fearful that, uh, this will not pan out as, as it, as it wished. I will add that I, and I'll make this sort of final. The, the wording that I had as to parking, uh, is, is, uh, is not quite what was shown on the screen. There's, uh, the word remote, which was very open-ended, has now been watered down and, and, uh, quantified to six hundred and sixty feet. Mind you, that's more than two football fields from the back of the end zone to the back of the end zone twice. Walkable? Sure. But not, not, not attractive. Uh, and in general, I think that this is, uh, that this is putting the heart, cart before the horse. This is not a, a suitable project at this time. I am all for densification. I am all for the B R, uh, the, the rapid tran, bus rapid transit. But not now. This is the wrong project at the wrong place at the wrong time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Do we have any other speakers?
Um, next would be Karen Haynes.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm just gonna share a few things. I'm sorry. My name is Karen Haynes. I live at fifteen oh one East Lenora Street on the Joe Lewis Park area, uh, about two blocks or so from the Battery Heights, which is where I grew up. Um, my mother, Mrs. Maddie Jones, uh, lives at one hundred Bart Street, which is the property adjoining or literally right beside the, um, new development, uh, projected land and has been there, um, I think nineteen fifty-five, correction, nineteen, very late, nineteen fifty-one. And, um, one of the things that, uh, she wanted me to just, just to say is, um, she's still here. She is still here. This is her and my dad's only property that they've ever owned. Five generations have come through. And as a family, we gather there a lot. Typically have to work out the details when we're coming because we have to either carpool or say only two cars can park because there's just not enough room uh, for, we don't have a driveway for just one car that, um, thank God that's there, but that wasn't always there. But as, as a family, but mainly from my mom's perspective, she just wants the developer and the city to understand that, um, there are people like herself in the nineties that still want to enjoy their community and their home. She can't really complain about the taxes because taxes are going to always be here. And they have increased, obviously, which is a hardship for her, someone in her nineties. And we know that that's only going to go up. But what can we do to still make and help make this be, you know, a successful project? And, and that's really her concern. The family wants to see, you know, growth and some change. But we've been here for a long time. As Chakana has said, we've been neighbors with Chakana. Uh, matter of fact, probably the Windows House and our house and maybe two other houses are the original homes that are, are in that neighborhood. Our house is one of the old soldiers' homes that was moved to that location. They didn't build all of those homes. They moved some of those homes from other parts of, uh, Raleigh, downtown Raleigh. For, for the old soldiers that lived in it. And we actually have pictures of the numbers that were on these doors for the veterans that lived there. So this is a, a home that means a lot because of the character, but the community has a lot of character. So think about that going forward. What is Battery Heights going to look like in five years? And if it's attractive, that's great, but that's not everything. That's not everything. I appreciate your time. Have a good one.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Are there any other speakers?
I have two more. So, uh, Meg Finnegan is next. You there, Meg? Okay, we'll go to the next speaker. Wanda Shade.
Hi, my name is Wanda Shade. I was born and raised on the corner of Hargad and Bart at twelve, twelve. I am a Raleigh native, lived in my, all my life. I've moved from the neighborhood. My address is one, two, six, zero, one Shooting Club Road in Raleigh. However, my parents' home is still there. We still care about the neighborhood. My parents built their home. I'm sixty-six and I came from, home from the hospital there. So it's been there a very long time. To add on what lots of our neighbors have already spoken about, I just want to say that we all are in unison about the water, the crowding, the parking, the development as, as a whole. But I wanted to bring one key factor that I wonder if anyone has considered. From the old News and Observer to Roberts Park, we have, our neighborhood has encountered the influx of hundreds of people now. The entire community has changed and we're all about change. But this little tiny spot will impact our community of more than about a hundred people. We're talking forty units who could have, at a minimum, one person, two people, even three people to a already tight and crowded community. So the old New Bern, the old News and Observer is getting ready to change and have hundreds of units. The old Y W C A is, has just been torn down. I believe construction for another housing development. You move further on down, coming on down to Bart. There are two new, um, apartment duplex buildings that are almost completed. On the opposite street, on Martin, there's about four new apartments going on. And I do own some property on Martin. You go on and cross Tarber Road. We have tons of new homes and, um, in that community. And on Bart and Battery and specifically, there are two new units right across from Chakana. So I think that our neighborhood has done its part in helping Raleigh grow and progress. And with that, I'm going to say thank you for listening and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Shade. We appreciate your comments. Um, is Ms. Finnegan available now?
Uh, I did not realize she was, uh, transit staff, so not here.
Oh, okay, okay. So that was our last speaker?
Carolyn Winters messaged me, um, that she agrees with the community concerns I've been addressed. I can unmute her real, really quick if she has anything else to add.
Okay.
Carolyn, you're unmuted.
Hi there. Thank you all this afternoon for taking our time and, uh, listening to all of our concerns. I don't have anything to add because I think it has been very explicit as to our concerns from the community. I just want to say thank you and, uh, I'm here for the support.
Thank you, Ms. Winters. We appreciate it. Okay, if that's everybody, I will bring it back to the table. And ask if there are questions or comments from the committee members. Commissioner Fox.
I'm wondering if there is staff available to speak to us about the roadway improvements, specifically intersection improvements that might be occurring as a result of the Bus Rapid Transit project. Um, and then also, um, I had a question about the stormwater concerns um, that the community showed with that, um, isolated flooding. I wanted to know, um, if, um, if that was a common occurrence, if it was due to a blocked up inlet or i- if they had any more information on that.
We have Jason Myers here from Raleigh Department of Transportation. He can speak to the intersection improvements. There's also a, a traffic calming project for Bart Street that I think you can also provide some details on. And I'll also pull up, uh, we do have the preliminary diagram of the intersection improvements.
Yes, thank you, John. This is Jason Myers in the City's Department of Transportation. What you're seeing on the screen now, can I confirm, everybody can hear me, I'm getting mic check, or, okay, right. Um, what you're seeing here is the plans for the Bus Rapid Transit project, which is at the final stages of design, repeating and permitting. And, and Ms. Finnegan, who I think is on the call, can give us some more information about that implementation. But what this shows is that the intersection of Pool and New Bern and Edenton and Battery and St. Augustine is going to be, is going to be completely reconfigured into a much safer intersection. Um, and that part of that will be to eliminate that high-speed right turn slip lane that, that one of, at least one of those citizens mentioned. And, uh, create a little bit different geometry at that corner. I think that one of the things that, that you can kind of see from a point of reference here is that the, the parcels are shown as the, um, as kind of the aerial photo. And the right of way is shown as that dark green color. So you can see how the existing right of way kind of chops that corner off a fair amount. And this moves the street away from, away from the parcels in that area a little bit to slow people down through those series of right turns. And then the other thing that John mentioned is that there is an approved traffic calming project on Bart Street. Um, I should say approved by the residents of Bart Street. Uh, it should go to city council next week for final approval and be constructed this summer. Um, that includes, uh, some speed humps and some neighborhood traffic circles along with a, a batch of other city projects around the, the entire community to, uh, help slow speeds down. Are there any other questions about transportation I can answer?
Commissioner Fox, did that answer your questions?
That answered my question. Thank you, Jason.
Sorry.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Elder.
So I, I have a question. If you can pull that, um, image back up. There's a pork chop there. I'm sure pork chop is not the technical term there. But that, that red mark that's showing just as you turn on the pool, is that, is that what that is? A traffic island that will remain in place?
Yeah, it may be a newly built, um, concrete. Yeah, it may be a newly-built concrete median, but yes, it is a raised median to help enforce the lane separation between Northcon and Southcon.
So everyone leaving, I guess, Battery will be forced into a right-hand turn, right? I think they are now.
Yes, that is the case, and that is the current condition as well.
I think that was one of my... One of the questions that I had. Can you tell me, maybe you explain this and I... Oh, okay. The green highlights are just the road names, correct?
Yes, those are just labels.
Okay, got it. I think those were questions.
Those are your questions? Okay. Commissioner Fox, I have a question, but didn't you also have a stormwater question?
I did. If there's stormwater staff available to address some of the images and the videos that we saw?
Yes, this is Ben Brown from the Stormwater Management Division. Yeah, we do have some documented instances downstream of yard flooding, which as pictures would show as well. There are no instances downstream of structural flooding, which that's where more stringent code requirements would come into effect. There is a structural flooding complaint on one of the properties to be rezoned, but that would actually not trigger any sort of extra stormwater mitigation at that point as the applicant would need to take care of that issue on their own property when they redevelop. But I will say is that if the three properties are half an acre in size, that would kick them into more of the maximum impervious realm of stormwater management and not necessarily treatment of actual stormwater on their properties because the cutoff for a commercial property, which is what this would be considered by stormwater, is half an acre or less can use up to the maximum impervious, and the maximum impervious for this zoning district would be 65%. So beyond that, they would have to do stormwater treatment, but they will not be automatically doing stormwater treatment to the two- and ten-year runoff control for any new impervious like a larger development would.
Mr. Fox, did that answer your question?
That does, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, but I need some staff guidance here because I know we're down to 15 minutes before we have to end this and go to committee of the whole, and we have another agenda item that we aren't going to get to. So what do I need to do? Do we need to take some sort of action to move that agenda item to our next meeting or either the planning commission meeting or just a little guidance, please?
Yeah, so your deadline for action is in March, so you could potentially, if you wish to schedule another infrastructure and mobility committee in February, you do have the potential to have another one of these and then report out at the first March planning commission meeting, or if it's scheduled before the second February planning commission meeting, you can report out then. The other option you have is to report out today, back to the regular planning commission, and in that instance, you have the option to make a recommendation, and that recommendation could be approve, deny, approve with some additional guidance, deny with some additional guidance, or neither recommend approval or denial, and offer considerations for more discussion at the regular planning commission. Those are the basic set of options at this point.
Okay, so it sounds like, well, we have an opportunity in February to have another committee meeting to take this up. Is that okay with everyone? Is that okay with staff?
It works from a calendar standpoint, and I appreciate the question. What I would ask is that if there's a desire to continue the conversation, if there's additional information that you would like from staff or the applicant, please let us know here during the meeting if there are conditions you would like for the applicant to consider. I think that would be helpful as well, but just holding the conversation, just to hold it, I'm not sure is a productive use of our time.
Everyone just froze up. Can you all hear me? Okay, I've got the little swirly things on everybody's faces. So for this agenda item, I don't think we're going to get through this, and there probably is some more information that we need from the applicant and just questions for staff. So we definitely wouldn't be holding this one just to hold it. I was asking, do I need to take some sort of action for the second agenda item to move it to our next meeting or to planning commission? If that is a preference.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. If you're just going to hold it here in this committee, there's no need. You can just mention it'll be coming back at the next meeting. If you instead want to move it to the full planning commission, you would need to take a vote to do so.
Okay, okay.
Can I add one piece to that, too? Do you have a date certain for the next meeting?
It's whenever committee of the whole is. Travis, do you know what that date would be?
If you continue to a date certain, move it to a date certain, that makes a difference for notice purposes.
Yeah, so the next regularly scheduled meeting of this committee is February 24.
February 24, okay. Catherine, is that good for you?
Yes, as long as you state in the meeting, it's being continued to that date, that satisfies it.
Okay, okay. With the few more minutes that we have on the current agenda item, I had a couple of questions. One was, I think, based on the response we just got from stormwater, I wanted to ask the applicant if they had any plans for stormwater mitigation for the flooding that was mentioned that was occurring on one of the subject parcels. And then my other question, and we might need to take that up at the next meeting, but I'll just put it out there, was about the... I know this is a BRT corridor, and there's a New Bern Avenue study going on with recommendations, and I wanted to know... I know the recommendations aren't approved yet, but I wanted to know what's being done. How do these parcels relate to those recommendations? Are they part of a proposed transit overlay district or are they outside of the district? So those would be my two questions.
Okay, if you're asking me that, I would like to refer your storm... And I don't know the answer on your second question, but on your stormwater question, I think we could have either Fred Belligan is probably who I would look to first to ask what our... To explain what our plans regarding stormwater would be.
Okay, thank you. The second question was for staff anyways.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, but can Fred speak to... There's a couple of things I really wanted to speak to, and it was stormwater and trash in response to the neighbor comments. I think we've heard good things from city about transportation. We don't have any control over the roads and the safety, but city does, and I think they're working in that regard to make those things better. And, you know, I'm glad to see there's a traffic calming program going on on Bart Street. So Fred, why don't you speak to street closure and trash, and then I might want to bring it back and ask Mr. Moss a couple of questions.
Sure, and James, I'll invite Mr. Moss if he would like to weigh in on any of this instead. In terms of...
We only have... I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but we might not be able to get all of those things addressed right now. If we can just do the stormwater right now, we may have to push the rest of it to our next meeting.
Sure. In terms of the stormwater, we are operating off of IMAPs right now through the rezoning process. IMAP shows the estimate right at half an acre. Sometimes that ends up being a little less. Sometimes it ends up being a little more than what IMAPs shows. To be perfectly honest, I assume we would be into stormwater treatment anyway.
And so that would mean if we're in treatment, we would be...
We would be treating for quantity and quality for the two- and 10-year storms per kind of standard practice.
And that would mean that we can't... That our rate of release for post-development runoff would be not allowed to be any greater than it is today.
Correct. Yes, that was my assumption, and then I might offer one other thing. There's a little bit of hearsay here. Our understanding is there might be an issue with the storm drain system from the Battery Heights neighborhood at Bart Street. I'm not an engineer and I can't speak to that, but I would encourage you might ask that question of the stormwater folks because if there is a blockage or an issue that's impacting the neighborhood, there might be an avenue to create a pathway for storm drainage pipe in a similar way that we had talked about this there. But I am... I want to be clear, I am not qualified to speak to that, and I'm only going on what I've heard offhand from some of the neighbors.
Okay, is that something we could ask staff to bring us information about at our next meeting? That was a stormwater issue for the Battery Heights neighborhood. It sounded like maybe a more structural issue.
We can...
Yeah, this is Ben Brown again. That is definitely something that we can check and bring back to your next meeting.
Okay, awesome, thanks. And can someone answer quickly about the... If this is within the proposed TOD district, or is that something we need to bring back as well?
I would need to check those proposals. This is John Anikos from staff. I think... So first of all, those are not finalized, the TOD overlay mapping proposals for the New Bern station area planning process. I think in the preliminary maps that we've been developing, at least the RX parcel is included in the overlay. I don't know for certain whether the two currently zoned residential 10 parcels would be included, so I'd have to double-check that. And then just to clarify this statement from Mr. Belligan, or rather, Ms. Maddox, the post-development runoff volume cannot increase for the two- and 10-year storm events. For larger storm events under typical UDO requirements, it could increase. So the controls that are required, the quantity controls that restrict post-development runoff to the predevelopment rate are for those specific ice storm events.
Okay, thank you, John. I think at this point, we probably need to wrap this up so staff can transition to the committee of the whole meeting. We couldn't take any action on this today anyway since the conditions weren't signed, correct? I see nods. So, okay, so do I need to... I guess we will push these two agenda items to the February 24 meeting of the Infrastructure and Mobility Committee. Do I need to do anything else? Do we need to vote on anything? Do we need motions? Excellent. Okay, well, thank you.
You don't have to, but you don't need to.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I appreciate all of the comments. I appreciate staff, the applicant, and if you have any additional comments, send us an email before the next meeting, and we will talk about this again on February 24. So thank you, commissioners. I'll see you all in a few minutes.